Ms. Bowlen?
Here.
Ms. Boatright?
Here.
Mr. Dring?
Here.
Dr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Mrs. Munter?
Here.
Ms. Winslow?
Here.
Okay. All right, so we have a quorum, and next we will... Just get a minute. Okay, next, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to offer a moment of silence for the following individuals. Danielle Bullhouse, retired principal of Cranston Calvert and Sullivan Schools and former school committee member. Inez Sanders, cousin of Anne Marie Johnson, a paraeducator at Thompson Middle School. Susan Randall, cousin of Sherry McLeish, paraeducator at Pell. Jerry Reynolds, grandmother of Ryan Collins, teacher at TMS. Joseph Andrade, uncle of Candace Andrade, director of student services. Emmanuel Carrero, uncle of Victor Carrero, custodian at Rogers High School. Patrick Mooney, father-in-law of Ronnie Mooney, director of ELL Services. Georgia Sears, mother of Doug Sears, Pell custodian. And Janice Tucker, aunt of Ronald Gonsalves, executive director of Finance and Administration. Please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. All right, the first thing we have on the agenda is subcommittee appointments, and it's come to our attention that Amy C. Lynch would like to join the Wellness Committee, and we want to welcome her to the committee with open arms. And thank you for, you know, deciding to participate. And if anybody out there wants to participate in any of our, you know, especially health and wellness, please contact Kathy Nash, and we can add you to that group, all right? So, there you go. All right. And now the mission statement, which I think Kendra's going to read tonight. Sure.
The mission of the Newport Public School System in partnership with students, families, and the community is to provide challenging education with academic rigor and appropriate support so that each student will possess the knowledge, skills, and character essential to productive citizenship, healthy choices, lifelong learning, and the ability to make a meaningful contribution to our global society.
Okay. Constantly remind ourselves while we're all here. Next, we have, we'd like to call up Mr. Michael Monahan, Assistant Principal at Rogers High School, who was recognized as the Rhode Island Assistant Principal of the Year. So if you'll come up, we'll read the... Congratulations. Okay. Whereas Michael Monahan has served as Assistant Principal of Rogers High School since September of 2018, and Michael Monahan holds a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from Skidmore and master's of education from Salem State College. And Michael Monahan works collaboratively to promote students and families in academic and social successes, increase attendance, and support the entire student population at Rogers High School. And whereas Michael Monahan has established positive relationships with his colleagues and is a team player that is invested in improving climate and culture within our school community. And whereas Michael Monahan is tireless in his efforts and has demonstrated his dedication to assist students in becoming their best selves. And whereas Michael Monahan was honored as Rhode Island Assistant Principal of the Year by the Rhode Island Association of School Principals, and therefore be it resolved that Michael Monahan be commended by the Newport Skill Committee as the 2023 Assistant Principal of the Year, and therefore be it also resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the official records of the Newport School Committee, and the original will be presented to Michael Monahan as an expression of our appreciation for his performance as a truly professional and outstanding member of the educational community and as one who has gained the respect of those whom he has served so well. And bearing witness to this is all the school committee and the superintendent of schools. Before we ask Michael to say something, I want to say something. So I was in on the interviews when they came to, you know, interview him. He had been nominated. If you could have been a fly on the wall in that room and heard the most unbelievable comments from teachers, parents, you know, students. I mean, he comes in, he's a problem solver. He just, if you got a problem at Rogers, come see him. I know he's the right-hand man to the principal there, and he's the can-do kind of guy. And we really appreciate everything you do here at Rogers. So now we're going to turn this over to you for some words of wisdom.
Thanks, Becky. Thank you, everyone. I am truly humbled to have been nominated for and then to have actually won this award. I appreciate it. I'm not a big attention guy. But it's been, it's been a great experience, and I've gotten some great opportunities from it. I've increased my network, and I really do love working for Newport. It's a great city, and, you know, we are working hard to continue to improve. And I just want to thank you all. I appreciate you all. And let's get ready for another year.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation by Rogers and NACTEC on the new graduation requirements.
So much for the congratulations, back to work.
Another year.
So what we did was, there was a sort of cheat sheet, if you will, about what requirement changes and what some of the goals of Rhode Island Department of Education's change in graduation requirements for the class of 2028 are. We took the document, and we just added in red where we stand right now. Many of the requirement changes, we already have either in place or ready to go, or we have already had them. And I think we're in a really good position right now to meet all those requirements. Some of the key changes that we are working on, we've always had, or not, we've for a long time had four required credits in math. We now have to ramp things up to make sure that all students take Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II among those four. They also, beginning with this senior class, have to take a course in financial literacy. We've had that in place for a while, and we have both half-year and full-year options to meet that requirement. Another significant change is that we will need to ensure that all students take two years of the same foreign language, same modern world language during their high school time. We've added Portuguese as another option and have received some interest in that. We're going to be running two sections this fall, and we found a teacher, and we're in pretty good shape there. We're also piloting a computer science course. We have a computer course already that's been a requirement, and one of our teachers who teaches the computer class, she's taken a summer course to ramp up her skills to be able to do that, and we will pilot a section of that which will, you know, give us a lot of feedback as to, you know, what we need to do to prepare kids for the computer science literacy. Those are the biggest changes. I think on the tech side of things, we're in pretty good shape with the work-based learning. That's something we need to work on to spread that across our student body. We do have some time for that with our current rising eighth graders to be the first class responsible for meeting these graduation requirements so we can take our, you know, our model from Career Tech, from NACTEC, and spread that, you know, throughout the student body. Rye talks about support that will support the development of flex credits so that teachers have the opportunity to design rigorous and meaningful interdisciplinary learning experiences to support the passions of kids. We have been very flexible and have always looked for innovative ways to, you know, to provide education for our students. We have had students get credits for their job, you know, meeting certain requirements with us to determine that they, you know, they're doing their job, they're being on time. We've formed relationships with their employers to do that. We've, you know, we're, you know, working on a program with Salve where students are, if all goes well, going to earn college credit while doing that program, along with the option to get admissions to Salve Regina for successfully completing the program. And we're always open to, and those are just some examples, but we're always open to other possibilities. So I think we have the infrastructure to provide that. Those are the key components that are a change from what we're already doing. Did you want to be it?
So with some of the course offerings that are now graduation requirements, so to allow our students to still have a lot of flexibility and options at the high school, we've pushed some of those down or plan to push some of those down into Thompson for like the upcoming school year with world language. They're doing exploratory for Portuguese, Spanish, and French. But then, starting next year in eighth grade, they're going to offer Portuguese I, Spanish I, and French I again, which will then be high school credit-bearing. So then kids can come in and take two and three and still meet that requirement and still have more options open for more courses. Similarly, with math, with Algebra I going down potentially into the eighth grade. And then with the computer science, we're also looking at that in seventh and eighth so they gain that experience, and it doesn't necessarily overwhelm their schedule at the high school, and they can open up to take more options with us. Do you guys have any questions?
When you say you're looking at moving, would all eighth graders take Algebra I?
Yeah.
And we think that would not... I'm just wondering how it's going to trickle down because obviously it's going to have to keep carrying down through grade levels to bring them up to eighth-grade level to take Algebra I, because right now not all students qualify for Algebra I. I'm just thinking of how it's going to play out in the big picture of getting everyone up to Algebra I level by eighth grade.
So I apologize. I wasn't trying to cut you off, but we offer or should be offering that Algebra I. So not all kids are going to take it. We'd like to get to a place where everybody in eighth grade would take Algebra I because when we start looking at like National Honor Society, Top Ten, Val and Sal, that is one of the biggest roadblocks for kids to getting to that higher rank in their class or a higher GPA because that taking the eighth-grade math in eighth grade doesn't provide them the opportunity to take like Geometry as freshmen and then higher-level, more advanced courses later that are way different towards that GPA. So we'd like to get to a place where that is happening for everybody. But we're starting off with having that in eighth and then for this coming school year.
A key to any of that is more collaborative work between the high school and the middle school math departments and admin, and to make sure we're communicating about what's working, what's not working. Look at the data, you know, analyze it objectively without, you know, saying, wow, that's just because of this or that. Figure out what, you know, our students who come every day, how well they're doing, and where are the gaps there? Figure out, you know, why students aren't coming, and actively, continue to actively make plans. We've made some gains, but it's got to become habitual. And I am excited about the new curriculum implementation. It's going to force us to work together more and to be on the same page a little bit more and to be able to compare apples to apples.
I have a comment. So since I've been on the school committee, there's always been, you know, in each cluster, one grouping of Algebra students, right? And sometimes that class gets pretty full. At some point, you just like have to, I think, we just need to, you know, decide to offer the second class and really push kids to get Algebra. I don't think we, if we wait, well, not this year, not this year. I think we just open it up, and, you know, sometimes kids will really surprise you, you know, and be able, and you get, you know, teachers in there and with the right kind of help. So I just would say we should maybe be jumping to the second Algebra class. Just have a higher expectation.
I agree. I also, there is a lot of structural changes that would need to happen at Thompson so that those kids are prepared walking into that eighth-grade year to take Algebra I, you know. So it's not something that we can just say, we're going to deal with tomorrow. There needs to be a lot of planning and work with the middle school, which, you know, with Mr. Browner or Dr. Browner down there now would bring some consistency, and then we can really do some of that articulation and talk about what is needed at the high school for kids that are coming up, and what are the expectations, and then help support Thompson in that.
Because of all the things, you were right. That's the one thing that divides those kids when they get to the high school, is that Algebra class. And so I say we just, you know, really, like, let's do it. Let's make it happen.
My comment on that would be let's not forget that Rye has in eighth grade that are not Algebra-based.
Well, they're not.
Did that change? Do we used to offer Algebra in middle school?
We've done it since I've been here.
Yeah.
Algebra in middle school.
Yeah.
Eighth grade.
We do it now, Algebra I.
Not everybody.
But not everybody, I see.
Right.
Right, it's one, so one section in each cluster. But sometimes it's a very full cluster or very full section, and so we're just, it's bust out of it and keep going.
Is that the case at other schools too? That they have the two options? Is that typical in eighth grade?
So I know from my own experience, when I was at Kikkamuea Middle School and before that at Curtis Corner, we had the two. You had the eighth-grade math, and then you had an accelerated track, which got them through Algebra I by the end of the, by the end of eighth-grade year. But there's always been that conversation of we should be doing Algebra I in eighth grade for everybody so everybody walks into the high school or walks out of that middle school having that same experience.
Middletown and Portsmouth both do the same model right now.
I just have one quick question. If you would go over, you had made a comment about the computer science class, like a pilot, and I just missed it, and I was wondering if you could say it again.
Yes, we're just piloting one section where our teacher got some training over the summer to incorporate, there's a little bit more, it's a shift from applications to programming, basically. I can't speak much more intelligently than that about it, but there are certain standards that need to be covered that our current model does not. You know, so we're going to model it and not do it across the entire class this year and see how it goes and try as quickly as possible to make that shift, you know, in its entirety.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it's still Essentials of Computing. Is that really what it is? And then you're just going to enhance it? Or are you going to try to change it to be a different? Can you just answer that?
Yeah, part of the reason why we're piloting it is because we don't really know exactly how in-depth it goes, and I'm assuming with some adds, we're going to have some removes. That might be another thing we need to collaborate with the middle school because I know they do some technology work to figure out what they might need to do in order to better prepare. There, you know, there's a lot to that. Computer science is, students don't necessarily get exposed to that outside of school. I mean, they could, but...
Right, right.
So, I mean, we just need to really look into it and...
But you're saying you're going to, so your plan is to add a little bit of the programming side into Essentials for this coming year? Is that what you're saying, though?
Yeah, one, there's, we're going to take one section and really just add a lot of it as much as we can.
It's going to be much more programming than if the Essentials course was running.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Almost like a gateway into computer science and maybe even Advanced Placement Computers, which we have run.
Okay.
And we'd love to, you know, put some more students in a position to head in that direction.
All right, thank you.
It says that you're in the process of hiring a college advisor with FAFSA experience. Is that something you would just be, you know, filling? Because I can't tell you as a father who had a daughter who's a senior going to college next week how helpful that was.
Yeah, so we've had the college advisor in the past. You know, she is pursuing a degree in Syracuse, so that's a vacancy at this point, so it's still open. But we're looking at hiring folks. We have a couple people that we're interested in trying to bring in to fill in that role because that is, that FAFSA support, and particularly because it's now something that we're going to be held accountable more, you know, with our ratings. We really need to make sure we're trying to get all of our kids to complete that. And not that we haven't in the past, but it's just, it's been, it's a mountain of work to try and get that done, even as an individual.
It was so helpful, I can tell you. I don't know how we would have done it without it.
Yeah, Carly was great.
She was.
It's tricky because school counseling does not cover anything or certify counselors to become financial folks, like, and to have experience in, you know, partnering with families to do the FAFSA. So she did provide a very specific need, and we are, you know, getting acknowledged either positively or negatively for our percentage of students who complete it, which is a whole other challenge we're trying to deal with. So, yeah, we want somebody for all those reasons.
It also keeps the kids totally organized on what needs to be turned in, on what day. I mean, it's going to be a lot of pressure, and nowadays, a lot of these kids turn everything in by October. So hopefully, by the time school starts, you have someone in that position because if not, you know, school counselors are going to be inundated.
Yeah, they are changing, I believe, this year. The date that you can submit your FAFSA from October 1st to December 1st, so I guess we bought a couple months.
True, but just getting the application...
But that's not...
But the applications is what, half of what she does, too, work with the kids.
Yep, yep.
So those are due by October.
That our counselors can also handle, but, yeah, we need that role. It's imperative.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
And please let us know when you get her hired. Him or her? Them, okay. Next, we have public comment. Has anybody signed up?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Dr. Jermaine.
Dr. Jermaine did.
You signed up?
I did.
Oh, well, then you stand right...
Colleen Burns Jermaine, 70 Breton Road. I'm happy to share with all of you, we have a new Thompson Middle School principal, Dr. Michael Browner. And Dr. Browner, I'd like you to come up here and say a few words, show your face on the camera. Congratulations.
I thought you were going to complain.
Good evening, everybody. And thank you, Dr. Jermaine, for that introduction. I just want to take a minute to offer many thanks to the Newport School Committee and to Dr. Jermaine for this recent appointment. I am delighted to take over the ranks of the leadership team of Thompson Middle School. It's important at this time that I acknowledge our Assistant Principal, Mr. Nick Vakarat, and our MTSS Coordinator, Ms. Beth Rafa. They have welcomed me onto the administrative team, and we've already begun to work and plan for 2024. I was just saying to Kathy Nash a little while ago that I'm most looking forward to September 6th when the boys and girls come back to school. I have been a classroom teacher at Thompson. Newport-born and raised, went to Thompson when it was a junior high school many years ago, and Mr. Dring's father, Mr. Arthur Dring, was the principal when I was in the eighth grade, so I remember that well. I'm thankful to be back at Thompson in this capacity. Many of you know that I served as an Assistant Principal at Charles E. Shea High School in Pawtucket, and that was a very good experience for me. And I returned to Newport, my hometown. Thompson is in my blood, having been a classroom teacher there for 24 years and returned just last year to teach Grade 5, which was an outstanding experience. We have the most exciting fifth graders last year who will become sixth graders in just a few weeks. I think one of the things I'm also most excited about as we begin 2024 is that the kids that I taught last year in Grade 5, I was their teacher a couple months ago, and when they return in September, I will be their principal. So I'm looking forward to seeing what their reaction will be. So I want to thank also Patty All, who has been very helpful in helping me to get organized and get started with a new scheduling, addition of additional common planning to our schedule at Thompson. Both Jared and Mike have, from Rogers, have welcomed me with open arms. And again, this is my hometown. Thompson, again, is in my blood. You don't stay at a school for nearly 25 years if that school does not mean something to you personally. So again, I want to thank all the members of the school committee, and certainly again to Dr. Jermaine and all of you for the warm welcome as the new principal at Thompson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right.
Thank you.
Be nice to end the meeting with that. Next, we have a request for the approval of the FYI 2024 budget. Do I have a request or motion to approve made by Mrs. Boatright and seconded by Mr. Dring? So we'll leave that on the floor.
Good evening, school committee members. What I have in front of you is a revised budget based on revised state aid that was finalized in the middle of June. Within this budget document, I kept the same format that we have been using for the past few years, and I highlighted on Page 1 the summary of revisions that take place to help balance our current revised budget compared to where we were before this revised budget is in front of you. Are there any particular questions that you have with regard to either the budget document or Page 1?
I asked all mine today, so, good. Is there any other discussion then on this?
May I just make the comment that, basically, we had lost some funding from the state that we had anticipated coming forward, and then our finance director, Mr. Gunn falls us. Maybe you could just say very generally how you've adjusted it, but it's all, it's in the backup at this point in time. But by taking things out of expenditure areas and then adding, making some adjustments in the revenues, it's now balanced at zero. So we, between expenditures and income. And so that's your chore, and you've done a great job. So that's what we're here to approve at this time.
Yes.
I didn't have specific questions. I was just wondering if you would go over like in general, yes, what you did so that everybody hears that message. Thank you.
Absolutely. No problem. I'll start with the revenues, which is on the second half of page one. So, the state aid allocation was reduced approximately $675,000. That wasn't the total net effect. We did have additional state aid given to us in the form of MLL categorical that had quadrupled from prior year. But those have very stringent requirements on spending. Primarily, it's focused on PD or coaching, PD-related items. So, there was, at the bottom, and I'm reading from the, from the bottom up, the state aid allocation was, was cut $675,000. So, that was the first edit I made to the budget. The next, we're really combing over other revenue areas that may have been overly conservative when balancing our prior budget. And I have always taken that approach of conservatively estimating revenue so that way, you know, if something unforeseen happens, it won't have a negative impact to us. So, we have increased our tuitions in by $25,000 and that is based on current enrollment as we closed out the 2023 school year. I, I have notes to on the left-hand side that we had an average of approximately $621,000 from impact aid, so that allowed a slight increase. We didn't get right to that average in the budget, but we increased it a little bit. And we have adjusted our indirect cost recovery based on closing out the ESER grants, one and two, as, as well as taking into consideration what I anticipate to receive in indirect costs from the current year CRP allocations. And those are Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and IDA funds that come in as annual allocations to the district. I am relatively comfortable with these increases in revenue. We have, we have come in above everything that's conservatively stated in the revenue forecast in this, in this current budget. So, that comes down to the next section, which is the expenditure updates. So, I briefly mentioned that we had additional MLL categorical funding. That was kind of a subset of our reduced state aid allocation. So, what we are going to do is focus more PD related to ELL, which we already had approximately three days, full days of scheduled ELL-related work. So, we have an earmark hold or reduction in the budget from PD for $110,000, which really will be then helped funded with MLL categorical dollars. We have shifted some funding into Title III for a half of an L teacher. In the prior year, we had a .25 there, so this was a slight increase into that expenditure category, which will be funded from Title III. We shifted half, approximately half of the infrastructure and security as well as internet support from the general fund into ESER III. That was allowable based on prior years, we had 100% of these categories funded with ESER. When we developed our March budget, we transitioned those costs into the general fund. Unfortunately, state aid didn't come in quite as well as we hoped for at the beginning of the year. So, this is somewhat of a transition year. So, instead of taking 100% out, now it's half funded with general fund, half funded with the previous funding, which was ESER. We have noted a hiring freeze for additional support in the business office as well as a reduction to bus assistance monitors and our legal services. We had previously forecasted some additional costs in these areas that, once we had a soft close at the end of June, we realized there is, there is some potential savings in these areas. It's not a great deal of money cut from each of these categories, but I, I think it's realistic.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the budget as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have 5.2. This is an exciting, this is to a, a motion to ratify the agreement. I think Stephanie, you were going to make this?
Yes, I was going to make a motion to ratify the tentative agreement between the Newport School Committee and Teachers Association of Newport, subject to approval and signing of a final contract.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Dring. Okay. Any discussion on this?
Aye.
Maybe somebody from the team that worked on it wants to say a few words?
I was just going to thank the Teachers Association and Ms., Director of HR, Tracy Jacques. We had a lot of great discussion and I'm looking forward to the next few years with the Teachers Association and working together for all our families. It's going to be a good, very good year. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to hear from the teachers union too, if they wanted to say something?
Well, you may want to vote for us before they say anything.
I will, I will just say that we did have the superintendent and her team leading the negotiation for us this year because again, our goal is to really have it a much more collaborative working environment amongst the administration and the teachers and so on. And so, we, you know, we're very excited about this coming year with, you know, trying to set goals and so on and have the, the two groups working hand in hand. So, that's really where we're at. Would anybody else like to make a comment? No?
Not at this time, but.
That's right. Okay. But we're very excited.
At the start of the school year, we, we wanted to have a little bit to say and present, so.
Okay. All right. So, hearing no other discussion, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passed unanimously now. We'll invite, now that you know it passed.
Right. Yeah. And we're very excited, I will say, to have this done before the start of the year.
I don't have like Reese's Peanut Butter Cups. You can just sit right there.
I don't have like, you know, the candy jar, candy bags, not available today. Especially my office right now. Nothing, well, it's somewhere, there's no helping wellness.
Hi. I am Jennifer Hall. I'm the President of the Teachers Association of Newport. I would like to thank Colleen and Dr. Jermaine and Director Jacques for their collaborative work that myself and our PR and our Chair, Beth Calfein, did. We met, I don't even know how many times. Right, a lot. And it was, it was a really, really collaborative process that we did. It was so, like, it, it was just a really good, it really, the way it worked out was wonderful. And I know that we will continue to work that way as we did most of last year and certainly moving forward. So, we're really excited about it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great way to start the year, really. Thank you. Okay. All right. Hearing none. And by the way, Mr. Conley stayed in case there were any questions, but he got off the hook there.
I do my best work this way.
So, will it let you leave if you want, you know?
Thank you.
Like, go back or? Okay. 5.3. This is a request to replace carpeting in the first floor of the TMS administrative offices. Do I hear a motion to accept made by Stephanie Winslow and seconded by Mrs. Boatright? All right. We have a motion on the floor. Now, we'll hear from Mr. All.
Hi, guys. Looking to get $20,900 from the Thompson Middle School budget to replace the carpeting at the administrative offices there. We've had three bids. We also attempted to get some bids from the island and those two people could not bid. Then the other three were off the island and we did settle on one, the lowest bid.
When you said they, they couldn't bid, what was the reason why they couldn't bid?
One said they were too busy and the other one said, "We don't do that work. We just do tile." Something, whatever.
What I'm going to say.
You know, I, I wanted to get somebody from the island, which is, they couldn't do it.
Keep trying. Keep trying.
Yeah. Appreciate you trying, yeah. It's always good to have someone.
Will this work be done before school starts?
I don't know. You know, as soon as we're done here, if it gets approved, I'm going to call them. They have to order it and I don't know how long it will take to come in.
But the installation, do we know how long the installation might last or the work is up?
I don't know. You know, try to work with them, maybe on weekends, if they could come in on the weekends or something.
I just wanted to make a comment, ask a question because it's the first time we've seen that it's coming out of the Thompson budget. Like, have you now created like little capital budgets for each school? I'm just curious.
Normally, normally the capital budgets are $25,000 and above, I would like to believe. So, it comes out of there.
Okay. I just wanted to ask if that was a change.
I'm sure Dr. Browner doesn't like that idea.
I know, right? Coming out of his budget. So, I just wanted to ask, but thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, any more discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one?
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is 5.4. This is the, to approve the revised calendar motion to accept made by Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Kendra Winslow. Kendra, Munter?
Whoever, yes.
Yeah, whoever. Sure. Okay. And so, now we have Dr. Jermaine just to talk about it or Ms. All coming up?
Some of the changes.
I think Mrs. All's coming up. The changes, just highlight the changes.
Yes, we, in the late spring, we had a change with the legislature as far as the primary elections. And we, the first one's in September, September 5th, where we'll have professional development for our teachers. And then in the November calendar for that election, the regular election, we're going to offer this year parent conferences. So, they'll be all day. I believe it's November 6th. I don't have it up. 7th. Yeah. 7th. I don't have it up in front of me. And then on April 2nd, the next primary election, we're also going to have parent conferences on that day. We heard that parents would really like to have scheduled parent conferences, both in the fall and in the spring. So, I want to thank the Teachers Association for working with us. Director Jacques and I, with Director All, she was also part of that, looking at the calendar. For the, for the parents who are just seeing this right now, we will have a color coding key for you so you can see that everything that is in yellow and orange will be no school days. This year, Newport will not have any early release days. We did hear from a number of different factions, both teachers and students and families and the committee, that the prefer, you know, the half-days were really challenging for families, so we don't have that. So, that's the calendar and we'll get that posted and up on the website tomorrow for all our families.
Another suggestion is RTR, like somebody reads that.
Right to Read.
Yeah, I know, but it drive, acronyms drive myself and Angela McCollough crazy.
Okay. I think that we'll probably put professional development.
Okay.
Yeah, because then we're going to be asked what's Right to Read, so. And for the audience, Right to Read is a legislative passed initiative for specific reading training for our teachers and they'll be participating in that.
All right. So, any more discussion? Yes, Stephanie?
I just have a comment. Our last day of school is a Monday, so I don't want any snow days because that costs money and maybe the kids have fun, but you know. What are we going to do to make sure that last day is not a throwaway? It's hard to get people to come on the last day and making it Monday is really difficult.
So, we'll make every effort and tell all our children the importance of being in school. Maybe we'll have special events, but right now, I think we do need to get through the winter because if your request of the school department was no more distance learning days, if we do have inclement weather, we will have no school days. So, we will have to make those up that week.
Of course. Yeah. I'm just not wishing a large snow budget, snow bill, snow removal bill on the maintenance.
Any other discussion?
I just want to comment also that I'm very happy to see that there are no early release days because at one point, there were seven of them. So, this is really a wonderful schedule in my opinion. So, thank you very much for changing it to like this.
That was a team, team effort.
Yeah, that was very good. Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Unanimously passes. Okay. Next, we have a request for approval of amended EPCAP Family Service Coordinator Agreement. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded by, by Mrs. Boatright. All right. Now, Mrs. All.
Thank you. We had put this before you in June and had requested a cap on that. We still had some questions with regard to the inter-agency agreement. Those have all been answered to our satisfaction, so we'd like to remove that cap and move forward with the amount listed.
Is there a change in the amount?
From the, from the original that we requested, yes, because we asked for a cap and we'd like to go back to the original amount. So, we would be looking at 111, 222, 22 from Title I and 2383, 92 from McKinny Vento.
Okay. Are there any questions on this or discussion?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a request for approval of amended EPCAP Academic Support Agreement. This is 5.6. Do we have a motion to accept?
A motion to accept.
A motion is made by Ms. Winslow, seconded by Mrs. Munter. And this is Mrs. All again.
Yes. So, again, this is the same situation as previously. We had requested a cap of $58,000. We'd like to have that removed and go to our original amount of 61, 570. I'm sorry, my glasses on. $50,144, 64 from Title I and 11, 426 from Title III. Removing that cap that we had requested in June.
Is that what that says? Just a question. You've mentioned 11,000. I don't see that on here. I see 17,000. Where? Should be 11.
In the, in the.
You know what? I must have, oh, it's on the second page. You know what? It's not on my first page. It's on my second page, so.
It says in the backup is 11.
It's right on the second page. It's not on the first.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know. Sorry. Okay.
It's 11.
It's 11.
It is the 11.
It's on the first page. It's wrong.
Oh, okay. Yes, it's 11, 426, and that's coming out of Title III.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passed unanimously. Next, we're moving to a request for approval to purchase a greenhouse. This is Dr. Gonzo's little item.
Good evening again. I believe right before the greenhouse request is a request for approval of a RIDE MOA learning.
Oh, right.
Inside-out grant that will, if, if approved, support the next item.
Okay. So, this is for 5.7. And do we have a motion to accept? Made by Mrs. Boatright, seconded by Mrs. Flowers. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. The MOA with RIDE allows the school to make a purchase for learning outside. And Mr. Goodburn prepared a grant and it's to install a greenhouse and develop the surrounding area around the greenhouse, which will include pollinator garden, composting, composting bins, raised bed gardens, and a zen garden. And it will be supported with the, the grant offered by RIDE. One catch about that is we have approximately a year, a year and a half to spend all the money. So I know it's rather abnormal that I would put out an RFP, and we'll talk about that one in the next item, but in order to hit these timeframes, we, we did put an RFP out. We haven't made any promises, nothing's contracted, but we did get quotes, so we can move this forward.
Okay, are there any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. You're still up on 5.8, which is a request for approval to purchase the greenhouse. So motion made by Ms. Boatwright, seconded by Mrs. Munter.
Well, thank you again, and this purchase of a greenhouse will be supported by the grant that we just approved, learning inside-out. It was abnormal, rather abnormal, for us to post an RFP when we didn't have the funding in the bank, but we were awarded the allocation from RIDE and went through this process. We only, when we posted RFP, there was only one vendor that submitted an application. So this is, in a sense, a single source. There are other vendors that can supply greenhouses, but this particular vendor was able to guarantee that we'd get delivery relatively quickly once we approved and put the order in with them. Any questions?
Rodney, where is this going to go?
It is going to RHS, Rogers High School. Exact location?
Yeah.
TBD.
It was somewhat TBD. I do believe they have an area designated. There is, well, it won't, unfortunately it won't be. We can build some stairs to get up there. We, we will be working with contractors there to get this, once it's delivered, to get it installed.
Yeah, the fact that we have one now and we're, you know, we're taking down the old Rogers and we're putting up a new, we haven't quite got to where it's going to be, but it's very exciting that we will not lose that facility that we currently have. We'll have a replacement in the future, but, because I have been worried about what, what we're going to do with that, the current greenhouse, and this is the replacement for that, correct? Dr. Jermaine? Oh, is this different?
That is, right, that's, that's different. That's not our greenhouse. That belongs to the Tree Advocacy.
That's tru, you're right, right, right. But so this will be.
So they'll be moving that to another location.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Go ahead, Ms. Winslow.
Are we actually going to take delivery of this and construct it somewhere on school grounds and then have to move it? Take it down and then?
It won't be constructed until a permanent location is identified.
Okay, okay, that's all I need to know. And will, do we have somewhere secure to store all the pieces and parts until it, a location is found?
Yes, we anticipate having the location identified once this approval process happens. Then it's another 30 or 45 days to get delivery.
Okay.
After today, we can contract if it's approved, we can contract with the vendor, identify a location, and hopefully have it dropped off right to the pad.
Okay.
When it gets delivered.
Got it, thank you.
Can it also be stored by the vendor?
We, we could postpone delivery.
Yeah.
Absolutely, if needed.
Just a lot going on on that site right now, but you don't want to turn down free money, like, I'm not saying, but, yeah. Colleen's office has got room. Okay, any other questions on this one? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nay, there are no, no nays. Okay, next we have, next we have 5.9, the request for approval of policy 5, 5,300, and this is the wellness first reading. Do we have a motion to approve? Made by Mrs. Winslow, seconded by Mrs. Munter, their policy, so take it away.
Okay, let's see. So Kendra and I and Cindy King, who is, has just recently retired but was our food service director for many years, worked on this throughout the spring. We had been notified that our policy was really out of compliance and needed a lot of work, so we just said we're going to go from scratch. Kendra did a lot of legwork on this, and we picked and chose from lots of different policies throughout the state, and we got the golden seal of approval from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, Karen Wetherell, she was very impressed, and said it, you know, could become a model policy now for the, for schools in the state of Rhode Island, so we're pretty excited. We briefly reviewed it at our policy subcommittee meeting last week, there were no questions, so I move approval, except I would like to make an amendment. We had been searching for, we knew we had a food allergy policy, we couldn't find it, we found it. And so on page 7, I was, I would like to make a motion to add in the celebrations and events section, the last paragraph, where it's, to ensure food safety standards are met in accordance with Newport Public Schools Policy 2430, foods that may cause allergic reaction, and then continue, and to reduce the risk of foodborne illness.
Okay, so we have a motion to, for an amendment, do we have a second? Made by Kendra. Do we have any discussion on that amendment? Okay, hearing none, all favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, here, now we're, we're going to talk about, anybody else want to speak on the policy? I did want to make a comment because I've been the head of this, the Health and Wellness Committee for, I think, 14 years, until these women took over, and I'm just telling you, they are like really good. And when I say that it's going to become a model for the state, you know, I mean, I just can't believe the work you did on this, and it is so much work. I've, I've done this three times, trying to modify it and change it, and this thing is outstanding, so thank you so much for your hard work on this. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is a reapproval for recalls, 510, okay. Do you want to comment on this, Mrs.?
Sure.
Oh, wait. A motion first. A motion to accept is going to be made by Stephanie, seconded by Mrs. Boatwright. Okay, next, go ahead.
Okay, we're very happy that we're able to recall two of our teachers that had been laid off due to, partly in, to Dr. Broner's appointment to principal, and we also had in our NACTAC program, we had an increase in student enrollment, so we'd like to recall both teachers, even though we did have them already assigned an emergency certificates to work in other areas, so we're very happy to be able to recall them.
How many people are now left on layoff?
One.
That's it?
Wow.
And that person has been offered an emergency cert position.
Great, I'd like to hear that. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Next, we are just the discussion items, and 6.1, this is the school building committee update. Now let Mrs. Boatwright start out, and then I will.
Yeah, well, we're, we're finishing up the foundation work. The loading dock was the last thing to, we just finally finished out the very end of the excavation part of that, and then finishing up the, the foundation really, and then we just, I'm just going to announce today, for the first time, that just, earlier today, we did get the report from the land, the, the.
Par.
From par and the stockpile, I want to call it the landfill, that's not the landfill, but from the stockpile, and all the results came back, really, as they had been before, a few are actually a little bit better than they were before, so that was very much a relief. We haven't heard on the structural integrity of that dirt yet, which we're looking forward to get in the next few days, but they, I also want to say that they sent it to a different lab than the first time, so it actually is a second opinion of the people who are, who did the results, and so I'm glad that we have some people here to report that out in the news. And that, everything else is really working on the budget, and we had a meeting yesterday with the city council to talk about the funding and so on, but we are going forward. The school building committee meeting yesterday, our OPM downs put together a program saying that we have about $23 million left to expend, and that we are waiting for all the bids to come in, and then put together a plan how to get the building certified with the funding that we have left, and then we'll look for alternative avenues to get funding for what is needed after that.
So right on that same line, just add that, so come September, we should have the, now, of course, my senior moment comes here, but the GMP, which stands for the.
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed maximum pricing, which will then tell us exactly our expenditures, like on the project and what we have left. That will also indicate to, you know, for us what, what the delta might be in getting to where we really, well, where we need to be and where we really want to be. So we're, we're excited about that, and then, you know, and he assured everyone last night that he would not allow us to go over what we have in our budget at the current time, and that, you know, we are all working towards that goal, and I, and the mayor assured us last night too, that he's on the same page of getting this project done, so that was a really kind of very productive meeting that we had last night with them, and we're going to continue to meet, especially as soon as we get this GMP, we will meet with them again, because it is frustrating, you want to know all the numbers, but you've got to be, as he pointed out last night, we got to be patient, and we got to do this once and do it right, so. And then I think the other thing is just that the dirt pile now, which is a maximum of 22 feet, is totally covered with the, the coconut covering. It actually looks pretty good, we have some aerial views of it, and so that's an exciting part. So we're, we're moving along, and we, you know, trying not to let anything get in the way and just making it happen. Any questions on the project? I know everybody on our council here keeps very up to date on it, so we appreciate that. Right, all right, hearing none, we'll move on to, this would be the cell phone policy, 6.2. Now, I put this on the agenda, but we had considered changing the cell phone policy currently, and realized that maybe major changes in that cell phone policy at the high school, you know, would be a, we didn't have the right information, we hadn't contacted the right people, we hadn't really, you know, because you got it, you can't just, you know, go there and dictate what's going to happen, you've got to get the input from the administrators, teachers, you know, students, but, you know, we all, you know, I would say the majority of people that wanted us put on the agenda was that what we really want this year is it to be enforced the way it's written in the policy as now. You know, it's just really easy to become lax, and, you know, that cell phones are a huge distraction to students and to learning. We're trying to do everything we can to improve student outcomes, and there are many of us on this board that feel as if they get in the way, you know. We also have to encourage parents not to text their kids in the middle of the day because that's a, that's a huge problem, you know. I mean, all of us grew up and, and, you know, you didn't talk to your parent till the end of the day, and it, and it worked somehow, you know. So that's, you know, we will have communication with, you know, and at the middle school also, they, they became lax in the policy there, and so for the time being, and then we're going to evaluate and see if there need to be changes, so that's kind of where we are on that. Does anybody want to add anything, Swinslow?
Yeah, we also discussed it at our policy subcommittee meeting last week, and we had Dr. Broner there from Thompson Middle School. Beth Raffa, who is the MTSS coordinator at Thompson, is also part of the policy subcommittee, so she was there. We had actually Director All and Director Andrade there on another topic, but they were there to participate in our discussion, so we had a lot of administrator input, and it was nice. And I think, I mean, the consensus is, is yes, we, we need to do it, any changes would have to be in partnership with our administrators, they have to enforce the policy as written, they were all in agreement that it, it's clear, no, no phones allowed, so they've got to take that step and get that to happen. And then we have to have, you know, the partnership with our families and then parents and guardians. And so we did think that it could, the policy itself could probably be edited just a bit to tighten it up and make it shorter and easier to read, and that way it would be easier to distribute to parents, to translate, et cetera, so I'm going to take that on and bring that to our September meeting, just like a revised draft, not changing any of the meat of it, but making it easier to read, hopefully, and so that it can be shared and, and, yeah, there's buy-in from the families and, and teachers and staff.
That sounds good. Any other discussion on it? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the subcommittee reports. I don't know, summer, we don't meet quite as often, who, I know that policy met, and well, health and wellness met, so, and finance met. Okay, so who'd like to go first?
I might as well go first. So NPF doesn't have any summer meetings, so it's been awesome being on that policy, being on that committee. Health and Wellness, we did our draft, we will have our next meeting on September 25th, and then our final meeting of 2023 will be November 27th. Again, we would love anyone who would like to join. If you are so interested in wanting to join our Health and Wellness Committee, just drop us an email, and we are, we will welcome you with open arms. And that's it, did I have to report back?
Anybody else?
We just talked about one other thing at our policy meeting on this past week, which is actually a requirement out of the Nathan Bruno and Jason Flat Act to students who committed suicide, and so there needs to be a policy and protocol in all Rhode Island schools to, I would say, intervene, to, to spot the signs of suicide, to, to have the mental health awareness training, to have the, all the whole response, there's a really big protocol. So we're going to, we just had a couple of tiny final questions that we'll pull, bring up at our next meeting, and you'll see that hopefully on our September school committee agenda for adoption.
Okay, the other, all right.
I mean, on finance, we've just really been reviewing with the administration and finance, just how to get to the current budget and things like that, just brainstorming different ideas on that, and looking forward to how to come forward with a longer-term budget to get, as has been requested on the superintendent's goals, it's like three to five year, how do we transition officer and, and the educational fund and all into the operating budget over the three, five-year period, so just discussions on that.
Okay, any other questions or? Okay, so now we need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Made by Ms. Boatwright, seconded by Mrs. Winslow. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? No?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So next we have monthly correspondence, and I'm just going to transition over here. Okay. Well, there wasn't any, okay, so we don't need to go over that. Next, reports from superintendent staff, do you have a, a motion to accept made by Mrs. Boatwright, seconded by Mrs. Flowers, Dr. Flowers. Okay, so anybody want to talk, we, well, we have Mr. Gonzalves here to talk about the requests, the invoices and requisitions, so if anyone has questions on those, he's here.
I'm sorry, are we on 9, 9.1?
We're on which one?
We approve already that consent?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're on the, I swore I wasn't going to get mixed up tonight, it's been a long couple of days. Yeah, so expenditure and revenue report, that's what we'd like you to speak on.
Okay. Do we need a motion to accept?
I think we just did that. We did do that. We just did that, I just read the wrong thing. I just read invoices and requisitions, and it should have been expenditure and revenue.
Okay.
Any questions from anybody? I'm just trying to get out of here by 8 o'clock, I can see, so. All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed. All right, so next we have suggested meeting dates and agenda items. Does anybody have anything they would like to add to a future agenda?
No.
No?
I mean, I'm. Did we skip 9.2? Did we just do the whole thing?
Yes, we just did the whole thing. Okay, yeah, we, we had a, yes.
I just want to make you all aware that when the teachers come back, we usually, you do usually get an invite to the opening day, September 5th, all right? So you'll be, just to mark that on your calendars, if you're available in the morning, we'll have, I believe it's, I think it's 8 to 8:30, we're going to have like. We're going to have like coffee.
Here, it's kind of fun to come to see everybody.
Right, and then at 8:30, we have a very brief welcome back. Welcome to attend.
Okay.
There is one, maybe you could just announce this SBC meeting in the month of September, just so people have that. I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay, so the School Building Committee meeting, we just had one on August 7th. Our next one is Monday, August 21st. And that'll be at Pell Elementary School. And then policy is going to be on Wednesday, September 6th. And then we have a wellness meeting on September 25th, all at Pell Elementary School, all starting at 5:30. I'm going to ask for clarification. Is policy going to be 5:15 or 5:30?
5:30.
5:30. They're all at 5:30. Thank you.
And then the next time we have a, we put out a co-chair update, we'll put out future dates for SBC into the fall.
Yes.
Yes.
And when is the next one? Is it going to be?
August 18th.
Oh, that's, your summer's over.
Oh, so, no.
No, August 21st.
No, no, for the update.
Oh, for the update, yes.
Update, not until September?
18th, no, August 18th.
August 18th is your, your summer monthly.
Update, okay.
Update. And I believe you may want to send out something a little sooner about the positive.
Yes, we want, we actually want that to be.
To let the council and everyone know.
Anything tonight.
Yes.
We would walk away with knowing that those test results came back better, and they were.
Even better.
Used an independent lab.
A different.
A different lab.
Private lab.
Actually with two labs that now live there.
And we do plan to have that letter out tomorrow.
Right, to send to the city council, because they're, you know, just reassure them that everything's okay.
And the school committee and everybody on the update, but it will be just a letter.
Yeah. Okay, next we have, that was that. So we have no executive session, and we could have a motion to adjourn, I believe.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, made by Steph, by Louisa Boatright, seconded by Stephanie Winslow. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. Leading adjourn.
I am going to ask for Ms. Nash. We have a memorandum of agreement to accept the funding, and we're required to sign that. Do I have that correct?
Do I have to sign that?
Yep. They're called tonight.
Coming over there.
Approved tonight. The grant that was approved tonight.
All right, thank you. And I need a ride home. Do you need a ride home, Andy?
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to go home with Kendra because I'm going to ask.